Hello, I'd like to welcome everybody here to the Thursday, October 2nd, 2025, City Commission Meeting, located at the Municipal and Safety Building in the Commission Chambers in Johnson City, Tennessee. First, I'd like everybody to stand and rise for the invocation by Evangelist Tom Campbell with the Vineyard Fellowship.
Before I pray, thank you so much for the opportunity and the privilege that it is to come with you guys and ladies to lift up prayer for this city. So, I just want to say thank you. And I don't know if you know the value of this day today, and the biblical calendar is a high day. It's the day of atonement. It's the day when Aaron would go in and make supplication for all of the priests, all of the Levites, all of the congregation, and then he would come out and bless the people. So, I take this a high honor and privilege from the Lord to be able to pray. So, let us pray. Father, I thank you for this day that you've given us, and in the name of Jesus Christ, God, do I come before you. Father, I ask your blessings on the great city of Johnson City and the neighboring cities, the Tri-Cities, Lord. Father, I ask your blessings on these men and women that you have handpicked and raised up and ordained to be in the seats and the positions that they are. That, Father, you'd bless them and their families. Father, their spouses, their children, Father, would all receive blessings from you. Father, you tell us in the word of God that, first of all, supplication and prayers and intercession is to be made for all of them authority over us, that we may lead a peaceable and quiet and honest life. And so, Father, as they have many decisions to be made this day, especially this week, this month, and this year, we ask for wisdom, discernment, Father, to be granted to them. Father, I pray that Johnson City would go down as a city of righteousness and holiness, and a city as where there was a move of God, and that the whole landscape was turned, Father, by your mercy, by your grace, by your forgiveness. And, Father, as Aaron went in and he applied the blood on the mercy seat, we know that through Christ, our great high priest, Father, we have this opportunity to stand before you today. And, Father, I ask for mercy and forgiveness to be given to Johnson City, Tennessee. Father, that we would be a beneficiary of the mercy of God and of the grace of God, and that, Father, throughout the rest of this week, this month, and this year, your name would be exalted, and your kingdom would be furthered. Father, bless all of these that are here today, and I ask this in Jesus' name. God bless you.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Steve, or Kathy?
Vice Mayor, the next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the minutes for the regularly scheduled City Commission Meeting, held on Thursday, September 18th, 2025.
Do we need to make modification to our agenda before we proceed?
I was going to ask for that on the next item.
I'll move for approval on the minutes.
Second. Ms. Laus, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Commissioners, the next items, I would like to ask the Commission to amend the agenda, so that we would add an item 4.0, which is to amend the agenda, so you would be voting on amending the agenda as item number four, and that we move item number five, which is public comment on the agenda, to, would still be item five, and allow for public comment, and that we move item number six. It would still become item number six, which is to consider approval of John F. Hunter II as his letter of resignation as mayor of the city of Johnson City.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Laus, you call the roll?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
So, the motion to amend the agenda has been approved.
Yes.
The next item is public comment on the agenda. The first item that we have public comment on is item 6.1, and this is under consider approval of John F. Hunter II's letter of resignation as mayor of the city of Johnson City. We have Sylvan Bruni signed up to speak.
Sylvan, I'll just kind of let you know the rules for public comment. We keep it to three minutes, and it has to be about an item germane to the agenda that we have a vote on.
Sounds good. So, Sylvan Bruni, 166 Garland Way in Johnson City. Based on what Mr. Sealy said earlier today, I take that this is the opportunity for public comment, also on the process related to filling the vacancy for Mr. Hunter. So, good evening, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager. I want to start by noting that today's working session was handled in a clear and open way. The discussion about the process to fill that vacancy showed a real effort towards accountability and transparency, along what many of us in the community have called for. I think that sets a good foundation for what is to come in this process. I believe there is still room to strengthen that process, though, and to make sure that it includes meaningful community inputs and engagement. As it stands, the proposed timeline, which I hope you will discuss, is extremely compressed, less than two weeks. That does not allow flexibility for a wide range of potential candidates, especially working professionals who may have travel or other obligations, to participate. It risks narrowing the pool to people who already have flexible schedules or traditional civic profiles. And as Commissioner Wise rightly pointed out today, the last time a vacancy was filled, the open process allowed for more time than this. If we truly want this appointment to reflect and engage the community as a whole, I think the process should slightly be adjusted. Virtual participation in interviews should be an option, and the definition of public service should be interpreted very broadly. Leadership and service doesn't just come through typical civic organizations, like those that were mentioned today, Rotary Club or Chamber of Commerce. They also come from teachers, from healthcare workers, from small business owners, and countless other workers who may not have been part of the usual civic circles, but are engaged in their community work, and in neighborhood organizing, or in informal mutual aid, or in civic education at the hyper-local level. So, with that in mind, I'd like to ask three questions of the Commission. One, are you open to extending the timeline to give more community members a real chance to participate in this process? Number two, will you commit to allow virtual participation in the application and interview process? And three, will you ensure that the definition of public service includes the full range of experiences and contributions from our community, not just the traditional ones? Thank you again for your time and for including residents in this important process.
Thanks, Sylvan.
The next order of business is to consider approval of John F. Hunter II's...
Wait, I hear. I apologize, my microphone wasn't on. Thank you for letting me know. The next order of business is item six. This is to consider approval of John F. Hunter II's letter of resignation as mayor of the city of Johnson City.
Ms. Ball may hold you on that one. I think we've got a couple more public comments.
Oh, I apologize. We have, we do, I'm sorry. We have item, two, three other folks who signed up under public hearing. We have one that signed up under, two that signed up under item 8.1, under consider approval of Buffalo Mountain City Park Strategic Plan. The first person is Shelby Holly, who signed up to speak under that item 8.1.
My name is Shelby Holly, 2411 Circleview Drive, at the foot of Buffalo Mountain. Quite often, which I just travel, just to top a mountain, just to experience the beauty. Making it a state park would be a great thing for Johnson City, and citizens of Johnson City, and the visitors of Johnson City. That would be, you know, economically sound, it'd be environmentally sound, and just be things that would include the things that we have already in Johnson City, for our citizens. We just, we just want to remember and focus on, you know, what things we do have and things that we're trying to improve on, and not to destroy it in any way. And, of course, you know that I'm in support of that, but I'm not in support of anything that's business-wise or anything that's going to come in and be elected on, to be destructive to our environment, to our animals, the well-being of those. Animals can't speak for themselves, so somebody's got to, you know, represent them in a way that the people live there, they've got farms, they've got livestock, they've got domestic animals. There's, you pay, if you go up there, you pass all different kinds of animals all through there, and it's a great sight to see. If you just want to just get something to ease off your mind, I'd advise you to drive to the top and back down. But, let's, let's be for it, let's support it, and let's be against anything that's, you know, and you know I'm saying no about Bitcoin and any business like that.
Thanks, Shelby.
The next individual signed up to speak under the same item is Rachel Holly.
Good evening, I'm Rachel Holly, 2411 Circleview Drive, Johnson City, of course. Good evening to everyone, and I just want to say that this is one time that I'm actually with you all, where we want to make this a park. I think it's a good step going forward for our city. I looked online today and saw several reviews that people that had been to Buffalo Mountain, what they had said, and they said that they were glad that it was just a few minutes from downtown, yet it was secluded, and they saw animals, and I think they were just amazed that we have, you know, the things that we have. And I think that goes along with our Tweety Trail and Tannery Knob, and I think we need to keep things like that in the community. I understand you all want to build downtown, but I think we need to keep it well-rounded. And, of course, we don't think Bitcoin would work with this very well. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
Excuse me, the next individual signed up to speak is signed up to speak under item 8.2. This is consider approval to recommend Buffalo Mountain City Park as a state natural area. The person signed up to speak is Robin Phillips.
Robin Phillips, 2417 Circleview Drive, here in Johnson City. Good evening. I'm here to address item 8.2 regarding Buffalo Mountain City Park becoming a state natural area. Many of us live very close to Buffalo Mountain. I'm in complete support of this being passed. The Tennessee Natural Areas Program was established to provide oversight and management of Tennessee designated state natural areas, and it administers the Natural Areas Preservation Act of 1971, providing long-term protection for Tennessee's threatened and endangered plants and animals, animal life. Tipton Haynes Historical Site had a dire wolf fossil discovered on that property, and it made world news in 2005, and was featured on National Geographic. Tipton Haynes, the VFW, Ashley Academy School, and numerous residential homes are very close to Buffalo Mountain. In order to protect a state natural area, the property obtained by Brightridge in the industrial park next to Buffalo Mountain would need to be addressed by you, the elected officials, and you, Ms. Ball, the City Manager. I'm asking each of you to do what is right and to take control of this tract of land. This, of course, can be done by eminent domain. That simply means that the city can purchase the land from Brightridge to gain control over it by the city. I'm asking that each of you please give great thought to establishing an ordinance with strict regulations that will not accommodate the needs of Bitcoin mining or data centers in our industrial-zoned areas within JC City limits. If Bull's Gap can protect their citizens, and if Mountain City can put a stop to it, as well as Bristol immediately placing a two-year moratorium in place, then why is Johnson City elected officials and city management not taking the quick necessary steps to protect all of us? We have been told too many numerous times that we legally cannot turn down any business, but you can pass an ordinance that puts strict regulations that will not satisfy these companies' needs, then they will not come to Johnson City. In the end, it will become more profitable for all of Johnson City and not just Brightridge, TVA, and Bitcoin companies and investors in Bitcoin. You each have a very crucial role to fulfill for what is best for all 70,000 citizens and not just a select few. We should not have to keep begging for the right, for these things to be done. I would like to publicly thank you, Dr. Todd Fowler, and you, Vice Mayor Greg Cox, for stating in an email that you are against the Bitcoin mining. This does speak of your integrity to help protect all of us. I challenge the rest of you to listen to your conscience and heart on right versus wrong, so we can all become more united and less divided on such crucial decisions for the great city we all live in and love. If our city officials can pay out 28 million to silence victims...
Point of order, your remarks have nothing to do with the state natural designation, with all due respect.
I have one last...
And you've hit your time, and you've hit your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll clarify in...
May I ask one question?
May I? Yes, thank you.
May I ask one question?
No.
If we are allowed to speak, and we are equipped with three minutes, and this does pertain to the natural city...
We're well timed, but three minutes, ma'am. I appreciate you, Mayor, thank you.
Yes. And, and I would, and as soon as, as soon as you sit down, I will remark, I have made very clear in previous meetings, going back to two years ago, when this topic was brought up before it was ever even involving your neighborhood, that my concerns about Bitcoin and data centers was the very reason we brought this issue forward, to address it in our code. That's why there's a moratorium in place. I believe I have been very clear in every meeting we've had, that I am not interested in Bitcoin, and I'm not interested in data centers. And so, it would do you all well to sit back and observe what's actually happening. Right now, that can't happen in our community, because we amended our code to make it only possible, and I'll finish, only possible in a heavy industrial zone, and we put a moratorium on it until we develop those other codes, which Mr. Bruni is a part of a committee that's investigating. So, I appreciate your support for the natural area. I'm not sure how the latter half of your remarks pertain to that topic, and so this is not a backdoor way to talk about other issues. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
I understand why I have to yell honey cut to those to watch you.
Oh, okay.
Well, thanks, everybody, for speaking. Ms. Ball, next item?
Vice Mayor, the next order of business is item 6.0, 6.1. This is to consider approval of the, of John F. Hunter II's letter of resignation as mayor of the city of Johnson City.
Move approval.
Second.
Ms. Laus, call the roll?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
I don't know, I guess I would ask if our city attorney would then speak to the fact that, given this vacancy, that that would mean that now our vice mayor has become mayor? And so, for the rest of the meeting, we will refer to Mr. Cox as our mayor.
Tom, do you want to clarify anything else on that or on the process?
There's nothing else that has to happen. Our charter states that, again, once this vacancy occurs, the vice mayor shall become the mayor. And so, again, at this point, Mr. Cox, you have become the mayor.
Okay, thank you for that. I do want to just address now just how we're going to fill the vacancy of the Commissioner. We talked about it a little bit at an open workshop earlier today. I'm just going to point out a few highlights. But today is Thursday, October 2nd. We're going to start accepting applications, letters of interest, resumes for people interested in serving, starting tomorrow morning. Also want to clarify that if you've already sent a letter in or a letter of interest, to go ahead and resend that to the websites, that will be posted on the Johnson City website tomorrow. As far as kind of the timeline goes and how the process is going to lay out is, we're going to accept those applications from October 3rd to October 10th. At that time, we'll stop accepting applications, but the community can send letters of support for candidates during that time, and we're going to accept those through the morning of October 13th. And at that time, too, the Commission is also going to have to, we're going to, each Commissioner is going to nominate two people from the applications that we receive and turn them in, and then on Tuesday, October 14th, at 4:00, we'll hold interviews with the people that we've nominated. So, there can be up to eight nominees, two of each of us. There may be some overlap, so there won't be more than eight, and that will be an open meeting. As far as the resumes, letters of interest go, they will be public. If you submit them to the website, they'll be available for the community to see, and that way they can send letters of support or interest, and we can review those. Some things that they may want to include is their professional service, but also the community service. I'm going to echo what Mr. Bruni said, that can look a lot of different ways. It doesn't just have to be local civic organizations, there could be a whole broad measure of that, I think, stating, you know, teachers, and there's a lot of ways you could be a good public servant. I think understanding decorum and Robert's Rules of Order would be great to have. I also think looking at the website to see what we have as our strategic plan and what the current Commission is kind of working for would be great, too. Then, on Thursday, October 16th, at the regular scheduled Commission Meeting, we'll have public comment for people that have made the final interview process, and at that point, we'll have our agenda item, we can deliberate, and we'll take a vote on who we want to appoint. And they'll immediately be sworn in, so if you do plan to put an application, just plan to make sure you're aware of the times and the schedule, it'll all be posted, and also be here and present next October 16th, two weeks from today. Tom, is there anything else you want to add to that?
No, Mayor, I think you covered it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would just add that, in a sort of strange twist of fate, the one and only other time this Commission has done this, it was when Ralph Van Brocklin died, and the dates and the timeline to this appointment process are almost exactly the same. The interviews, I think, were on the 13th of October, and the meeting was on the 18th of October, but when you look back at the timeline, it was all happening within the same period of time the year Ralph died.
Sounds great. Just to wrap it up, just have your applications in by next Friday, the 8th. The Commission, we need to appoint, we need to nominate two people each by the morning of the 13th. Interviews will be Tuesday at 4:00 on the 14th, and then we'll take a vote on the 16th of October.
One other thing to add, if you want to send a letter of recommendation in, you have until the 5:00 on the 13th, so we have all those in to consider with the application.
And, and the sooner those come in, the easier it will be for us to review those before we nominate anyone.
Mayor, the deadline for the applications is October 10th.
Sorry, I've got your red numbers on the number of days.
I knew that would confuse somebody. It confused me a couple times, too.
All right, well, thank you, and if you have any other questions, just refer to the website tomorrow morning, the City of Johnson City website. Kathy, next item?
Yes, Mayor. The next order of business for the Commission to consider is Proclamations, Resolutions, and Presentations. Every year, we're fortunate to have our ETSU pharmacy students come and offer us flu shots. Some of us have already had those flu shots, and we typically will go down for, the Commission will come down and either receive those, or at least stand with our pharmacy students and appreciate them, and I think all of us make our way down there, and we will stand with them. Some of us are not getting those either because we've already gotten them, or we will, we will be getting those later, but we do appreciate you all coming forward.
Or we got them in the last hour.
Or we just recently got them. But we do want to come down and appreciate, and we're so fortunate to have this in our city.
Thank you all for being here. I'm going to read proclamation to you guys, and if you have anything you want to say afterwards about pharmacy and importance of vaccines, or whatever you want to talk about, you're welcome, too. But, "Whereas pharmacy is one of the oldest health professions and is dedicated to the health and well-being of all people, and there are more than 12,000 pharmacists licensed in Tennessee, and more than 327,000 pharmacists licensed in the United States, providing services to assure the rational and safe use of all medication. And it is important that all users of prescription and non-prescription medications, or their caregivers, be knowledgeable about and share responsibility for their own medication therapy. And pharmacists are specifically educated, with a focus and level of expertise on medication therapy that exceeds that of other healthcare providers, and are ideally suited to work collaboratively with patients and other healthcare team members to improve outcomes by providing services through medication therapy management. And pharmacists and student pharmacists from the ETSU Bill Gatten College of Pharmacy provide both expertise and accessibility, particularly in the southern Appalachian region, which is crucial to patients' fully optimized medication options." Now, therefore, I, Greg Cox, Mayor of the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, in conjunction with the national and state observances, do hereby proclaim October as American Pharmacist Month in Johnson City and Tennessee. So, thanks for being here. If you have anything to say, you're welcome to, and maybe at least tell us who you are and where you're from.
I'm Casey, I'm from Gate City, Virginia, I'm a third-year student.
I'm Isabel, I'm from Johnson City, and I'm a second-year student.
I'm Casey Brock, I'm from Elizabethan, and I'm a third-year student.
I'm Samira, I'm from Crossville, Tennessee, and I'm also a third-year student.
I'm Madison Hoskins, I'm from Kingsport, Tennessee, and I'm a second-year student.
My name's Lauren Lawson, I'm from Knoxville, Tennessee, and I'm a third-year student as well.
I'm Trinity Atkins, I'm from Abingdon, Virginia, and I'm a second-year student.
I'm Carly Costin, I'm from Broadhead, Kentucky, and I'm a second-year student.
Hang on, I understand our new mayor said he would take all five of our shots for us, right? But I've had mine. If you have a red Band-Aid, I'll put it right on the outside of my jacket, just to say how much I support the public getting their flu shot, it's very, very important, and we thank all of y'all for, you know, being out in the public and promoting this and trying to encourage people. Who knows what the flu's going to be this year, right? So, we can prevent it.
Mayor, the next item is a presentation of proclamation recognizing the week of October 5 through 11, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week.
Hey, guys, thanks for being here. I'll read the proclamation, if you guys have anything to say, that'd be great. "And whereas the city of Johnson City is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Johnson City, and fire remains a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and the growing presence of lithium-ion batteries introduces unique fire risk, and most of the electronics used in home today, including smart... in home today, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys, are powered by lithium-ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, or explode. The National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in battery-related fires underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium-ion batteries, and whereas the Johnson City Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety education, and community outreach. Now therefore, I, Greg Cox, Mayor of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, along with the National Fire Protection Agency and its 2025 campaign, "Charge into Fire Safety: Lithium-Ion Batteries in Your Home," do hereby proclaim October 5th through 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week in Johnson City, and urge all citizens to take the necessary steps to minimize dangers associated with lithium-ion batteries. Thank you. And also, if you want to talk into that a little more, and also just to thank you guys for your service and what you do for us as a community, and above and beyond just fire, putting out fires and prevention, but everything you do.
First of all, I want to say thank you to the mayor, commissioners, city administration for supporting Johnson City Fire Department in our efforts for community risk reduction. This is very important to us. We would rather not run the cause. We'd rather prevent them prior to. But the motto this year is "Charge Into Fire Safety." As he said, lithium-ion batteries are great things, but they can be dangerous. We just want you to be safe with that. You'll see our personnel out. They'll be out at the schools. They're going to be promoting all of this throughout this week and actually the rest of the month. But we want to thank you for your support, and please be safe out there.
Mayor, the next proclamation presentation is recognizing the month of October as Community Planning Month. I think we have, do we have members of the planning commission that are also here?
Yeah. Please come up. Thank you guys for service and being here, and thank you guys for the good work you guys are doing. Just going to read a proclamation. If you have anything you want to say, that'd be great. But whereas while change is constant and affects all communities, planners can help by using data-driven insights and expertise to provide guidance on the best ways to move forward. And community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And the Johnson City Regional Planning Commission comprised of 10 dedicated citizens plays an important role in reviewing rezoning, annexations, land use policies, and long-range planning efforts. And this critical work includes the Horizon 2045 Plan, the Johnson City's comprehensive plan, it's a growth management plan that will guide development, infrastructure, and preservation of community character for the next 20 years. And whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by the professional community, regional planners, and volunteers of the City of Johnson City, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to the public service by these professionals and volunteers. Now therefore, I, Greg Cox, Mayor of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, in conjunction with the national observance, do hereby designate the month of October 2025 as Community Planning Month, and ask all citizens to join me in honoring the commitment of planning commissioners and professional staff who dedicate their time and expertise to building a stronger, more resilient Johnson City.
Mayor, commissioners, I am grateful for this proclamation. What I would really like to kind of explain is that one of the things that Johnson City has been able to do in this last year without a planning director for nine months of that year is accomplish really big things. The Horizon 2045 Plan was a big achievement for the planning commission. They put in a lot of effort, and there are a lot of people that are not here that put in some effort, as well as our staff. We have been able to maintain a great level of service for our customers and to be in the communities, to have those conversations that I hope that we can keep having. And just a few little accolades, like I said, we haven't had a director for nine of those 12 months. And Riley here achieved one of the greatest things you can do as a planner with an, it's called an ASEP, which is the American Institute of Certified Planners, within that year, as well as the planning commission being able to pass a lot of things, including the Horizon 2045 Plan. And we're really excited about the things that we have coming up, that are coming out of that plan. So.
Anybody else want to say anything?
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We appreciate you. And thank you to all these other commissioners. I know I'm new to the committee. I'm just recently appointed. But we appreciate everything that you do for our city, and we look forward to working with you. I will have to admit, I'm a little bit jealous of your turnout. So please come to the Regional Planning Commission meeting, second Tuesday of every month. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for your service and your good work.
Mayor, the next item is a presentation of certificates and completion recognition of the participants of Johnson City 101.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager Ball. I am Sarah Noble's Public Information Specialist in the Communications and Engagement Department. Tonight, we are recognizing Johnson City residents who recently completed JC 101. And at this time, I would like to welcome them to the front.
Come on up. You, come on up to the, how are you? Greg?
So JC 101 is a program designed to develop citizen understanding and awareness of the government's role in the community. The program consisted of 27 hours of government information that included presentations, demonstrations, and opportunities for questions and answers with different departmental staff. It was a pleasure to meet each of you. I want you to know that we gained just as much from you as I hope you have gained from the city staff that you've met. I also want to extend my gratitude to city leadership and the directors and staff. With your support, this program is a success. Any Johnson City resident who is interested in participating in JC 101 should visit the city's website, JohnsonCityTN.org, and navigate to the Communication and Engagement webpage. And under Outreach and Engagement, you'll find the application. I encourage you to fill it out. Mayor, do you, did I call you Vice Mayor?
You said, you said, you said Mayor. You're, I think, I think you're.
Mayor, do you have any remarks for the participants? And I'd be grateful if you'd join me in passing out their certificates.
That'd be great. Well, it's great to have you guys participate in this. Johnson City has this great program that can really help the community understand what our government does, the moving parts, the ins and outs. There's a lot more to it than most people would seem. And it just shows your dedication to want to serve the community, understand and figure out where you could fit in. So it's really great that you take your own time to look at this and look into what people do and how you can help in the future. And I'd love to read off the names. You guys graduated, right? LeAnn Fama, Nick Fama, Reka Kadom, Ginny Lockmiller, Laura Loth, Jacob Luellen, Hope T., Greg Nobles. I know, I'm skipping Donald for a reason. Marcy Griffin-Petros, Allison Pimer, Katie Sellers, and Otto T. Brock. And last, this is a special personal thank you, is I lost my mom last year on hospice, but Donald came and prayed with her one day unexpectedly, Donald Musiamunda. And his prayers are exceptionally beautiful. It's like poetry. And my mom asked for him almost every day for a couple months. And I really thank you for that. So, so I want to save you for last. All right. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say about the program? Open anything. Laura, I know you want to say something, and you're good.
Let us know how it was.
What was the most surprising?
Yeah.
I would highly recommend it. And I've been telling people for the last two months how much fun I have every Tuesday night. We get fed a wonderful dinner. And everywhere we go, we have the real privilege of different departments opening up what they do. And I've met so many impressive, dedicated, kind people running our city. And the recycling center was maybe my favorite.
Any other favor?
I think I'll give it to the firefighters. They did a wonderful job. And also the police. I think this is a very, it's a time change. It's really a changer to see what the city goes on. I've been here for such a long time. I never knew how much it takes to actually run for the city. And I'm very appreciative now when I'm crossing the roads, when I'm driving, and knowing that there's somebody and how they are communicating to, for me to have the stop sign. I didn't know all about that. And so that, to me, was such an amazing thing. It's very vital for everybody to actually take a time and, you know, become one of the members, too.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. And do we have another sign up? And how does that, do you know if there's a timeline on that? You may have mentioned it, but.
[inaudible]
Sounds good. Thank you, guys.
JT, would you like for us to stand up behind him? Let's do that. Come on.
Yeah.
Come on. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for calling.
Kathy, what's the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is consideration of the consent agenda.
Does, I'll start to my right. Anybody have anything they'd like to pull?
7.1.4, please.
Okay. Commissioner Brock?
Yes, since Mr. Witherspoon is retiring next month, everything on the agenda that has your name, I'm going to be calling it. So if you would let us know about the Claude Simmons lift station out by the tunnel project, I think people would be interested.
Commissioner Wise, anything?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay. So the first item is item 8.1.2, Consider Approval of Amending the Agreement with CSX. And we have Tom Witherspoon, as Commissioner Brock mentioned, to speak about this item.
Mayor Cox, Commissioners, Ms. Ball, Ms. Laus. So this is actually part of the railroad agreement. The project itself, the bids were approved by the commission about two meetings ago, I believe. There's a lift station that's been upstream of the CSX Railroad out near Mountain View and Nob Creek Road. The project involves phasing out that lift station through the extension of a gravity sewer line from near where Lowe's is at, out at Marketplace Boulevard. But the key part of that project is a crossing, which would be a bore or a tunnel underneath the CSX Railroad. And this amends the CSX agreement previously approved by the city commission and makes it specific to our contractor, who was the low bidder on that. So the project phases that lift station out. In the big scheme of things, we've probably got 96 lift stations. We continue where possible to phase those out. They're mechanical. They can have mechanical issues. They use power. Gravity is generally the best way to go. And so this will be another lift station that we will be able to phase out with the project.
You're going to take it with you when you leave?
No, ma'am, but I will be happy to send Mr. Lane a picture of it.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks.
The next item that was requested to be pulled is a grant for school resource officers. We have Captain Mike Adams here to speak about that, as he's making his way. I'd like to also welcome him as our next deputy chief of the Police Department. Starting November the 4th, he will take over as our deputy chief.
I would just, sorry. I would just most, for everyone here and for the public to know, that we started having resource officers at our schools years ago that we decided we would pay for. And then the state came up with grants for that. And I believe this year, it covers almost every one of our school resource officers at the tune of $825,000 that doesn't have to come out of our budget anymore, but comes from the state to help with that. Anything else you would like to tell us? Because it's a great thing for us.
That is, that is correct. It pays $75,000 per SRO for 11 eligible schools. So grateful for the state and this state grant. It really helps us not have to take that money out of our budget. So, yes.
Right. Thank you. Thanks for applying for it. And thanks for our schools having their resource officers that make our schools more safe. So thank you.
And to the resource officers, they're everybody's favorite person at the schools sometimes, I feel. Nothing against the teachers.
Thank you, and thank you all. Appreciate it.
Move for approval?
Ms. Laus, we call the roll.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor, the next one is under other, and it's item number 9.1, which is to consider the approval of Buffalo Mountain City Park Strategic Plan.
And on this one, I kind of, I really would like Commissioner Brock to handle these two items, because you have been instrumental in both of them, especially the second one, and led hikes and all sorts of fun stuff for a long time. So if, although Buffalo Mountain's extremely important to me and where I grew up, but I'd love for you to handle this one.
We are where we are on Buffalo Mountain because it's just one of those things that makes sense. You know, we don't have to build everywhere. And I have been captivated by Buffalo Mountain forever because it has stood guard over our city since we were a city. And it was there. And one of the things that when people first got off the train with Henry Johnson, looked up and there was Buffalo Mountain. So it is an amazing habitat. And the pristine creeks that come down from the headwaters down Buffalo Mountain are just one of a kind. But the flora and fauna are very unique. And so we kept thinking about how it can be preserved, the legacy that we leave future generations, I guess is a good way to say it. And I visited another natural area, state natural area. There's one up in Roan Mountain at Hampton Creek Cove. And it just, it was like, okay, that's what we, what we need to do. So staff has picked that up, and they've run with it. And I guess that's the update we're going to have right now. Is that right? Very good. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager Ball. My name is Dr. Maggie Darden. I'm the Planning and Project Manager with the Parks and Recreation Department. And I'm excited to bring forward to you all the 10-year strategic plan for Buffalo Mountain City Park. The purpose of this plan is to develop a clear and community-driven vision for the future of this park. This plan started with community input. We decided to do this plan after our comprehensive strategic plan collection of data, where our community said, we want to know what Buffalo Mountain will look like in 10 years. With that, I want to call out a couple of community members who've been instrumental in supporting Parks and Recreation in our progress on this. First, I want to call out Alan Dearestone, who is a dear friend of Buffalo Mountain. He would say he's there every single day, and I think he is. He would say Buffalo Mountain is probably his top passion in life and has spent years and years thinking about what the vision of Buffalo Mountain We also want to thank Dr. TJ Jones and Dr. Ryan Stevens of Biologic Sciences at ETSU. They've been doing research at Buffalo Mountain and continue to emphasize the importance of Buffalo Mountain, as Commissioner Brock stated. We also want to thank Dr. Jason Davis, who was classed Natural Resource Management, developed a draft strategic plan as a part of their curriculum. And last but not least, we've had a number of city staff across various departments who've been so helpful as we've worked through this process. So we have identified Buffalo Mountain Strategic Park, or Buffalo Mountain City Plan, as a strategic goal in our 10-year plan for Parks and Recreation. Another tool that we've used for planning has been the Horizon 2045 Growth Management Plan. We know in Parks and Recreation how important our natural resources are to the city of Johnson City. And I pulled out just a select few of the places where this plan actually supports the Horizon 2045 Growth Management Plan. The area where Parks and Recreation really lives and thrives is the lime green area at the bottom, which is the healthy environment section of our 20-year strategic plan. So we have some folks here who probably haven't been to Buffalo Mountain City Park, and I want to give a little bit of an introduction to the park. Buffalo Mountain City Park was established in Johnson City in 1994 by a land swap with the U.S. Forest Service. We acquired 724 acres at that time. Then and now, we have permitted use of pedestrian only, so hike only, and over 12 miles of maintained trail. I love to go to Tip Top. It's one of my favorite trails at 4,000 feet elevation. The lowest point that you can start in our park is the parking lot at High Ridge Road at about 2,000 feet of elevation. And we have another access point at Dry Creek Road. I like to point out that Buffalo Mountain City Park is the area shaded in green. You can be on Buffalo Mountain and not in Buffalo Mountain City Park. And that's a thing that tends to confuse some community members. There is a distinction in the boundary we have. We share that name with Cherokee National Forest. It is also surrounded by privately owned property, which is demonstrated on this picture with the blue-gray shading, and the red-orange shading is U.S. Forest Service. Over the course of this plan, we started at the very beginning by forming a Stakeholder Advisory Committee. And that committee identified what they wanted the community input to look like for this beloved natural feature for our city. With that, they shaped two community input surveys and two in-person public meetings. After we finished all of our data collection in that, we were able to share that data with Dr. Natalie Smith, who did a qualitative and quantitative survey analysis to really get through that data and give us some good, good leads on where we needed to go next. And the ETSU Natural Resource Management Class offered us their feedback as well. We took the data and turned it into a plan. And we presented that plan to our Stakeholder Advisory Committee, who gave us initial feedback. We took that feedback, we presented a new revised version to our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, who on September 25th voted to approve and adopt this plan, which brings us to the very exciting day today, where we're bringing it forward to commission to recommend adoption of this plan. I want to just highlight for everybody's, just for context, how much people love this park. We have over 64,000 visitors annually. So that's 64,000 visitors in the past year, and over 37,000 of those visitors are unique. When we were posting about this, about the Buffalo Mountain Strategic Plan process, we got over 35,000 engagements on social media, comments, likes, shares. We also had over 300 people attend our sessions in person. In our two community input surveys, we had over 2,600 total survey responses, which resulted in nearly 32,000 pieces of data for us to look through to develop this plan. I think that demonstrates how community-driven this goal was. As a result, we were able to identify the seven top themes that our community wanted out of the strategic plan, with the first being nature preservation. Our community also wanted maintained trails, an improved infrastructure, educational programming to participate in while they're there, improved trail signage and wayfinding, public safety, and connectivity. And all of that is in the strategic plan. So back to today. We are here to answer your questions, I'll move to that, that you might have about the strategic plan.
Well, first, you thanked a lot of people at the start of that presentation. So I would like to thank you, Dr. Maggie Darden, for all your work. And I need to take some presentation skills from you, so you do a great job. So thank you so much.
Can I acknowledge the butterfly, too? You really, the star used to be the planning committee, the planning department's little trick, and you've really upped the game now to have a little more movement. I would wholeheartedly move approval. I think we have a true asset there. It's unusual for a city of any sort to have a mountain inside of its city limits, and then to actually own so much of that acreage is even further unique. And so, and I like your logo, but that's not really why I'm voting for it. I would move approval.
And I will second. I'll tag on to the butterfly. I guess that, is that an indicator we're going to go after the monarchs and just make, we're on the flight path? We just need to put the right pollinators here to attract them more. So wouldn't that be beautiful up in Buffalo Mountain?
All right, so we got a first and a second. We call the roll, Ms. Laus.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Next item for consideration is the approval of the, to recommend Buffalo Mountain City Park as a state natural area.
Good evening, Mayor Cox, Commissioners, City Manager Ball, and Ms. Laus. I'm April Norris, and I have the pleasure to be your Parks and Recreation Director for the city of Johnson City. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present before you this evening, and for formally adopting our Buffalo Mountain strategic plan. As an action item, item number one, nature preservation was the number one theme that kept arising when we were doing our community input. So this evening, I will be asking that we, the City Commission, make a formal request to the Tennessee Division of Natural Areas to designate Buffalo Mountain City Park as a natural area. This request does align with our Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan, as well as multiple policies within our Horizon 2045 Plan that Dr. Darden pointed out for us. So we are fortunate, as many of you said, to have Buffalo Mountain City Park right here, nestled in Johnson City. And it is our duty to protect its beauty moving forward. So the purpose of becoming a natural area is to provide long-term protection for Tennessee's rare and threatened endangered plant and animal life that exist in Buffalo Mountain. Designated natural areas are publicly owned or private lands that are encumbered by a conservation easement, and the management and oversight of that is governed by the Natural Areas Preservation Act of 1971. So natural areas represent some of Tennessee's best examples of an intact ecosystem and serve as reference areas for how natural ecological processes function. So what does that mean for us to become a designated natural area? It will provide protection to the land, the current 724 acres that we are so blessed to have. It will provide us with guidance for natural resource management, and it will provide us with state programming, so guided hikes through our state natural area representatives and so forth. So we will be eligible for all of those things. What it does not provide for us is any type of state staffing or any type of state funding. It will make it, it will put us at the top of the list to be able to receive grant funding, but it does not guarantee that for us. So what does that timeline look like for us? We are requesting this evening that we submit a letter of recommendation to the Director of Natural Areas, and that we would have, that once that director receives that recommendation, that it would move us into them to review that for eligibility. So that takes quite a few months for them to do that. And then we would move into the site visit phase of becoming a natural area. So the Division of Natural Areas would come and visit us. They would like to visit multiple seasons to really see what species that we have that exist on Buffalo Mountain, to catalog those. And then that recommendation will come from the Director of Natural Areas to Governor Lee, where that decision will be made final for us to become a natural area. So staff does recommend that we move into making this letter of recommendation to the Natural Area Director of Natural Areas. So if you have any questions.
I hope you have that letter already written, right?
We do.
But you have had conversations with TDEC officials?
We have.
And I think it's for the public as well. This is one of Governor Lee's goals. He wants to add more acreage to the state park system. And so I think we can help him out with that, for sure.
Yes, we can.
And I would move approval and note that we collectively visited in Nashville in the spring at some point, and met with TDEC specifically about this project. And I think there's interest on their part, there's certainly interest on our part. I want to echo what the mayor said in terms of Commissioner Brock's commitment to this project. We have that mountain, we have that acreage, it's in our city limits, but now it's really up to us and the state in how we make the most of it. So wholeheartedly make a motion to approve.
I will second. Thanks.
Second, Ms. Laus. Call it. Commissioner Brock?
Heck, yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor? Mayor? [applause] Mayor, the next item for consideration is ordinances under first reading. This is ordinance number 4931-25. This is an ordinance to abandon 9,162 square feet of public right-of-way at the intersection of South Roan Street and East Highland Road.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager Ball. I'm Riley Putney, Development Coordinator with the Planning Division. And tonight is a request for a right-of-way abandonment at the intersection of South Roan Street and East Highland Avenue. It is a city-initiated abandonment. We're at the first reading of the City Commission. And if you'll notice on the timeline, just to bring it forward to the commission, there is a gap in October, just due to staff availability and timing. So the second reading and public hearing will be on the November 6th meeting, with the final and third reading on November 13th. The request is depicted in the red area, there we go, the red area, again, at the city of South Roan and East Highland, and it is in conjunction with a realignment that was completed of East Highland, and it equates to 9,162 square feet. A survey was completed, and a public sewer easement is being retained. No other issues with utilities were concerned. So staff recommends approval of the right-of-way abandonment.
Could you show your timeline again?
Yes.
So first reading tonight, second reading, first meeting of November?
Did I get my date wrong? It would be the first reading, the first in November.
So it would really be the 20th, or the third reading would be November 20th then, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I apologize.
No, okay. I just thought we were going to planning. Anyway, sorry, never mind.
See, we're paying attention.
That is my apologies, yes. Then the final reading would be November 20th.
Okay, thank you.
And I checked that twice today, too.
Move, move approval.
Second.
Ms. Laus, to call the roll.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Commissioners, the next order of business is item 11.1. This is ordinance 4928. This is the third and final reading of ordinance number 4928-25, an ordinance to abandon an existing sanitary sewer easement located at 2715 North Roan Street with a property owned by the Pritchett Family Limited Partnership.
Mayor Cox, Commissioners, Ms. Ball, Ms. Laus. This is on an abandonment. You've heard from Mr. Lane previously what the background is. Sewer line originally went in in 1969, was relocated off of this easement in 2003. It's an encumbrance on the property. We don't have a need for it in the future. We'd recommend you abandon it on third reading.
Move approval.
Second.
Ms. Laus.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Next order of business is item 11.2. This is ordinance 4930-25, the third and final reading of an ordinance providing for the conveyance of a portion of right-of-way owned by the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, located in the 9th Civil District of Washington County, Tennessee, to The Well, Inc., upon the terms and conditions contained herein, and repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Ball, I'm Steve Willis, Assistant City Manager. You probably recall from our first two readings, this ordinance would provide for the conveyance of about 700 square feet of city-owned right-of-way to The Well. They have a beautiful building over on West Walnut and are looking at potential growth in the future. Staff would certainly recommend your approval, and there have been no changes since second reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Laus.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Well, I think that concludes our business. I do want to make a couple of comments, just with the unique circumstances and changes. And I've got a few thoughts, so be patient with me as I kind of get through them and kind of wrap my head around kind of the new role and where I am. And I just want to say that I'm honored to represent this community. It's where I grew up, my parents, my grandparents, where my wife and my kids. I want to thank my wife for supporting me to do this. This is a lot of time. I think even for her, the unknown of the time commitment and what it looks like is a little scary, so I just can't thank her enough. When I started this role 10 months ago, I did not expect to be here, running the meetings. But I am glad to serve. It's a little outside of my comfort zone, but I love this community so much, I'm okay doing what God wants me to do at the right time. I do bring a fresh face and perspective to the commission and to the city. I, we're all elected independently from each other. I've gotten a, you know, I knew Dr. Fowler as a kid when I was in high school, and great wisdom and experience from you guys. So it's a unique experience where I have a fresh face and a new perspective, but with three mayors to support me for any decisions and when I have questions and concerns. So after 10 months of service, I can firmly say that I have complete confidence that our city's in the right hands. We've got a great city manager with Kathy, and she has spent a long time putting the right people in the right place. And when Ms. Hodges says, like, hey, we didn't have a planning director for a while, a lot of it is intentional so the right person is hired for the job at the right time. And sometimes, having a break is better than having the wrong person at the wrong time. And so I think that there's a lot of pieces that have been put into place, really, just recently, so a lot of things have fallen into place. And so I'm really excited. She's got great support with two great city managers, Steve and Alicia. I think you can help guide all of us, and I'm really impressed by the way you guys carry yourselves. I think getting Whitney as a planning director, Brian Ross in charge of facilities, Whitney's got great planners with her, with Riley and Bryce, even I don't see Bryce here, but and we've got... She's got great support with two great city managers, Steve and Alicia. I think you can help guide all of us, and I'm really impressed by the way you guys carry yourselves. I think getting Whitney as a planning director, Brian Ross in charge of facilities, Whitney's got great planners with her, with Riley and Bryce, and I don't see Bryce here, but, and we've got terrific water and sewer. I mean, it's pretty unbelievable the size of our city and how well-run a lot of our departments are, and we're going to really miss Tom Witherspoon, but he's done a great job at lining up, a really amazing guy in John Lane that will help carry that forward. So, I'm really impressed by how the city's got the next steps in place to kind of keep everything moving forwards. Police, we've got a great new police chief that starts in a couple weeks, and Eric Daughtry. You know, last meeting, we honored a hero that doesn't get enough notoriety, but we had Officer Jonathan Workman that pulled his, I mean, his coworker, his partner, out of the line of fire after he got shot, Mitch Peters, and it's pretty unbelievable in Johnson City to have those community heroes. So, I am really impressed with everything that I've seen from the outside. I've tried to look through it with the microscope and see where it needs to be tweaked and worked on, and there's always stuff that needs to be improved, but our city's vibrant and thriving. ETSU's got the highest enrollment, I think it's on record. Parks and Rec to April Norris is always full. I mean, it's wild to go to all of our facilities and see how activated they are, and, you know, we get some complaints about we need more, and I think that's the best thing you can hear, is that our city is active and alive. Our hotel-motel tax this year was up. I think we just got something from Steve. It was almost a million dollars more than budgeted. It went from 3.4 to 4.2 in hotel-motel tax that came in?
Yeah, year-over-year, yes, sir.
Okay. Year-over-year. I mean, I think that's a big deal, and then we've got great local regional leadership in Rusty Crowe and Rebecca Alexander and Tim Hicks, some stronger-than-usual in Nashville that are really bringing some resources and awareness in Nashville back up here. And we've got a good relationship with Washington County and Jonesboro, so I mean, really some great things are going on. That doesn't mean we're perfect. We've got lots of stuff to improve. I'm not perfect, I'm going to fumble my words, I'm going to have some gaffes, but I'm here to serve, and I'm excited about it. We do have some goals to stay focused on. I just want to reiterate our goals that we established at our open retreat, but economic fatality, quality of place, future-ready infrastructure, and excellence in city government, and I can tell you that we work to that constantly, and we've got to get better, and we're going to, but I'm really proud of how we do it. And then just a few challenges to our community is, even though we may not agree on every decision, that's okay. Healthy disagreement is part of a strong community, but let's choose to disagree with respect. Let's focus on solutions, not tearing each other down. I ask each of us to do our part, celebrate what's good, speak honestly about what needs work, and treat each other with dignity and respect. So, with that, we'll keep Johnson City moving forward. Sorry for choking up a little bit, but let's be stronger, kinder, and we're united, so.
That was beautiful. Thank you. Mayor, I know you said you've known Dr. Fowler since you were little, but...
How old is that guy? We just keep forgetting how old I am. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Well, I can probably beat you. I've known you since you were in the fifth grade. Do you remember? I was not in the fifth grade. Okay. So, there is quite an age group that, a gap that we have, but I don't think there's a gap at all in the respect that we have for each other, you know? We kind of threw you into the lion's den on the first night you showed up for work. We made you Vice Mayor. Not ever...
And the mayor wasn't there.
And the mayor wasn't there, that's right. So, it should have been a clue.
Yeah.
But, and then 10 months later, you are the mayor. And so, as I've always said, and you're surrounded by previous ones, that, you know, being the mayor is, it's not a privileged position, but it is a privilege to serve this community. And we're faced with all sorts of challenges as we go on. We certainly have in these last couple of years. It's been hard, and, you know, we're just your neighbors. We're citizen leaders that I don't remember at all in all of my post-secondary education having a class on crisis management, but that's what we face. And I couldn't feel more secure in the people sitting up here, and then we will have a new member here soon, in working together to solve the challenges that every single city has. And nationally, we are challenged, and we don't know what's going to happen because of the decisions being made in Washington or Nashville, but we can with our trust in each other and good planning and great resources to support this city and our administration and belief in each other, that we can solve anything together. And so, to my colleagues up here, now you said this, your energy and our wisdom, we're going to be a great force right here. So, I've got one year left, and I think this is going to be a time where, you know, the kind of forces that have brought us to where we are is going to challenge us to be better leaders, and I look forward to, you know, calling you mayor, and you count on us to help with anything that you need, and we'll be there, and we'll be there for the people. Thank you.
Well, we have a great new mayor. He is from here, he grew up here, he cares about Johnson City, is why he wanted to do this. He is young, 10 months at this job, but he has three people sitting up here with him who care about Johnson City also. Nobody does this job for the money. I can promise you, the $100 a month doesn't go very far. He's getting a bonus up to $150 a month being mayor for all the time he spends. So, if you're doing it for the money, you are really not very intelligent, I don't think, if you're doing it for that. So, we are here to help. When he is not able to be somewhere, we're going to pitch in. We're all going to help because we are a team. We are, each one individual that has one vote, there's four votes total up here, the mayor doesn't have more, the vice mayor doesn't have more, it's four of us up here with one vote each. Two weeks hopefully we'll have a fifth person with that one vote, and we're going to work together to make sure we keep Johnson City going forward. I know there's good and bad about being the number-one place in the country to move to. We have a lot of work to do on keeping up with infrastructure and just keeping ahead of everything that's coming and all the people coming and trying to keep up with housing, and that's actually a really good problem to have, that people want to come and live here. So, we sometimes forget when we're having all these problems that we live in a wonderful place. I moved here 33 years ago. I really wasn't expecting, I didn't think I was going to live here for the rest of my career, but we loved it here. Raised four kids, adopted one kid here, and they all love it. They've been away, Chicago, Dallas, Oklahoma City, and all but one has moved back to this area from where they were because they realize now, they thought they wanted to go somewhere else, but when they went away, it's like, gosh, Johnson City's really great, we want to move back there. So, we want to keep that. That's one of the reasons why I ran in the first place. So, I know Greg loves this place, he wants it to be great, it's where he's from, it's his hometown. He is here to help, he is here as mayor, and we're here to help him. So, if he needs something, we're here behind him. So, please keep up with us as far as what we're doing. We're trying to make Johnson City better. None of us want anything bad to come to Johnson City. I know we got a little bit upset earlier about something, but we don't, we don't want that noise in our neighborhoods or by Buffalo Mountain. We don't want that. We're doing things to make sure that doesn't come here. So, we love this place, that's why we're here, that's where we're sitting up here at this place, is to make Johnson City great. It's great, and we want to keep it getting better. So, thank you for coming and being interested. Thank you for accepting Greg as our new mayor in a time where this is not easy for us either. So, we appreciate your prayers for us, too. So, thank you.
I would, I would echo the comments that others have made, and I want to express a concern that I have. I think there are those who don't understand the form of government we have and have historically singled out the mayor as the villain in whatever story it is they're trying to tell. The mayor is merely the chair of the City Commission, and so, I join the others in pledging my full support and assistance to Greg in this new role, and I do so with a sense that the tone and tempo and temper around the public discourse has deteriorated in a way that I don't recognize. I'm in my 12th year in, no, I'm sorry, 11th year in public service between time on the County Commission and here, and in the last three or four years, the nature of the toxicity that comes at us, I don't recognize it. And I say that to say, A, recognize what's been said, you know, we're just your neighbors; B, pray for Greg, because, and I told him this earlier, he and his wife can't read the comment section for the next five years. Best to turn your social media off because there's nothing worthwhile happening there. And, and then I would encourage us to kind of, before we assume what people are doing, ask, find out, you know? Look back at the meetings and so forth, you know? We're playing a long game on a lot of these issues. Today, we cut the ribbon on Walnut Street. Walnut Street started as a conversation about tearing down the mill in 2013. It's 2025. That is a long time, but if the vision is there and the commitment is there, and most importantly, the public support, you know, that didn't happen without significant amounts of public input and participation. When those things are in place, you can get to that in 10 or 12 years, and I think that's the path we're on. I think that's where the strategic plan is important. I think whether we're talking about Buffalo Valley, or, I'm sorry, Buffalo Mountain, or Walnut Street, or different things, yes, downtown, but not just downtown, South Johnson City, Boones Creek, you know, as a community, we don't have one priority. We have a myriad of priorities that look different based on different parts of our community. And again, keep him and his family in your prayers. When you're, when you're watching comment sections that get to a point that start to pronounce people's intentions and characterize people as good or evil, question your sources because they don't know what they're talking about. And so, you know, with that in mind, I know we're getting ready, I'm assuming, if I've been to enough of these meetings, I think this thing's about to adjourn. But, but I want to say to those of you who are here particularly concerned about Bitcoin or other issues, we're not going anywhere, and so, you know, I'm happy to stay and talk because I want you to understand where we're at on this issue and what we are trying to accomplish. I think we've been as clear as we can be for where we are at this point. I would much rather have a solution that sticks than kind of some throwaway line that makes everybody think we solved the problem, and in two years, the problem rears its ugly head. Like, I'd much rather have something we know is going to work, and that's the path we've been on, not just this month or this year. You can go back to a meeting, I don't remember when that happened, was it 20, probably 2022 or 23, whenever the issue first reared its head in the county, that's when we first started talking about, we need to figure out how to get our zoning code out of the Eisenhower administration and into a time of recognizing that there's a whole new level of kind of industrial uses that it doesn't describe. And so, that's an invitation to anybody who's here, and I think, I don't want to make commitments for other people, but I imagine you all would join me, but in any case, I wish you well. And I do want to acknowledge Mayor Hunter. Now, I'm going to cry. He's my friend, and he made a terrible, terrible decision, but he did the right thing when he resigned, and I will tell you that no one told him to resign. No one said, "You got to resign from the Commission." He did the honorable thing in the moment of having made a profound mistake, and I would encourage everybody, nobody in this room wants to be evaluated on their worst moment, and John Hunter will not be, because John Hunter has a decade-long record of public service on our school board, on our planning commission, and on our city commission, and his record is one that is honest and admirable. Few people could take the big-picture, long game the way John Hunter. Greg gets close, but John seriously asked the good questions that had the long-term consequence. Others have too, but he will be sorely missed. We will, we will replace that commissioner, but we will not replace John. And so, I just want to acknowledge him. I want to thank him for his service. I want to thank his wife and children for the profound sacrifice that it is to be away from your family conservatively 20 or 25 hours a week, away from the job that pays and your home and your family, and he is to be commended for that sacrifice.
Well, I think that's a great way to end this, and he has also been graceful in how he's resigned, and I'm thankful for him, too. Thank you, guys, for being here.